Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning. Verbal testimony may be provided online through the NYC Engage Portal or by calling in on your phone. If you wish to speak and plan to access the hearing online, please register through the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage Portal. A link to join the hearing is on the landing page after you register. Please do not close the landing page without first clicking on the link. If you're accessing the hearing via phone and wish to speak, you must first register with the dial and participant hotline at the numbers listed on the screen. If one of the numbers is busy, please try another. The meeting ID is 618-237-7396. Press pound to skip the participation ID. The password is a normal one. The phone number is also posted on the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage Portal. Please note that whether you are accessing this meeting online or by phone, you must register if you want to speak. Those accessing the meeting online will have the option to turn on their camera while getting, giving testimony. When it is your turn to speak, you will be notified and promoted to a panelist. This will allow you to unmute your microphone and give you the ability to turn on your camera. Please listen closely for your name to be called. There will be a short period where it will appear that you are no longer in the meeting. Do not be alarmed. You should rejoin the meeting as a panelist. Please note that promoting speakers takes a little longer, so please be patient. If you're accessing the hearing via phone, your name will be called from the list of registered speakers. Once your name has been called, you will be given the temporary ability to unmute yourself. You do this by pressing star six to unmute your phone. For those listening to the hearing through the online live stream who have not yet registered to speak but decide they wish to do so during the hearing, you must also first register to speak through the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage Portal. It's not possible to testify through the online live stream without first having registered. For those accessing the hearing via phone who have not yet registered to speak but wish to do so, you must also first register to speak through the dial and participant line that I described a moment ago. It's not possible to testify via telephone without having first registered. Speakers are limited to three minutes of testimony. There are a few exceptions to the three-minute time limit. Elected officials are accorded the courtesy of jumping to the front of the queue and are not limited to three minutes. If consecutive translation services are being used, the time will be extended to five minutes. And if an applicant team with three or more speakers wishes to make a team presentation, the team will generally be allowed a total of 10 minutes. Their chair will announce when the time limit is reached. Please be mindful of potential background noise during your testimony. Please make sure that if you're watching the proceedings via live stream, that the live stream is muted when you begin your testimony. Otherwise, you will hear an echo. If you wish to submit written testimony, it should be sent to the Department of City Planning. The mailing and email addresses can be found on our website, planning.nyc.gov. Lastly, please note that this remote public hearing and all testimony provided is being recorded.
And with that, I believe that the Secretary can begin the meeting.
Good morning. This is the City Planning Commission Public Meeting held remotely through the NYC Engage Portal. Today is Wednesday, June 9, 2021. I will now call the role. Chair Lago.
Here.
Vice Chairman Knuckles. Commissioner Bernie.
He will not be present today.
Commissioner Bernie is here.
Okay. Commissioner Capelli.
Here.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Here.
Commissioner Dweck.
Here.
Commissioner Edie.
Here.
Commissioner Knight.
Here.
Commissioner Levin.
Here.
Commissioner Marin.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Rappleshad.
Here.
A quorum is prevalent. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, May 19, 2021.
On the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved.
Scheduling on calendar numbers one through four, we have resolutions for adoption scheduled in Wednesday, June 23, 2021, for a remote public hearing to be held through the NYC Engage Portal.
The resolutions, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The resolutions are adopted.
The next part of the calendar is the report section on page 113. Borough of Manhattan, calendar number five, CD4, C200352ZSM. In the matter of an application for the grant of a special permit concerning 314 West 43rd Street for a favorable report on calendar number five. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rappleshad.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number five. Borough of Manhattan, calendar number six, CD5, and 200022ZAM. In the matter of an application for the grant of an authorization concerning 25 East 21st Street Remus Condominium for adoption on calendar number six. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rappleshad.
Yes.
Calendar number six has been adopted. The next part of the public hearing section on page 115. Borough of Queens, calendar number seven and eight, CD14. Calendar number seven, C200230ZMQ. A public hearing, I'm sorry, calendar number eight, N200231ZRQ. A public hearing in the matter of application for zoning map and zoning tax amendments concerning Beach 67th Street rezoning.
There will be a 10-minute team presentation by a team comprised of Richard Lobel, Erica Keller, Brian DeBroski, Alfred Cockfield, Max Melzer, Michael Montalioni, and Amanda Iannotti.
Good morning. Richard Lobel of Sheldon Lobel PC for the applicant. While there is a long applicant team listed, the 10-minute presentation will be given by myself, Erica Keller of Brissa Builders, who will be discussing the program at the buildings, as well as Brian DeBroski, who will discuss the architectural aspects of the building. Reverend Cockfield of the Church is here as well, as are other members of the team, including environmental and traffic, to discuss other questions of the Commissioners. To begin, you see before you the Beach 67th Street rezoning, which would result in two primary buildings on a 31,000-square-foot zoning lot. The first being the building on the left side of the page, a nine-story Ayers Senior Housing Building with 84 units, and on the right side, an 11-story school building, which would house charter students. Next slide. So what are we here for today? This is a zoning map amendment. The underlying zoning districts of the lots under, in question are, is an R4A. And this is both on the east and west side of Beach 67th Street. There are seven lots, which are part of the zoning lot and the 31,000-square-foot development site. And then across the street, there is a senior nursing home, which would also be included within the rezoning area. The rezoning would be from an R4A to an R6 zoning district. And as you can see, the lots are included on the screen, and a discussion of the two buildings that would be generated, the nine-story affordable independent residence for seniors with 84 dwelling units, and the 11-story community facility, facility building for charter schools. In addition, of course, as with similar rezonings, we are pursuant to the resolution required to map an inclusionary housing district. We would request both options one and two, and Erica will be able to discuss that more in detail. Next slide. So here we can see the zoning map. What do we notice here? We notice the existing underlying R4A with higher-density districts along Beach Channel Drive. We also note that to the south of the property and the south of Beach Channel Drive, you have a preponderance of R6 zoning, I believe, greater than 80 blocks of R6 zoning, which provided the prevalent character for the entire area. In the immediate area of the site, as we'll see on some of the coming maps, there are some larger-density buildings, which make R6 particularly appropriate here. Next slide. So this is the exact area to be rezoned. You can see the seven lots that are part of the development site, which are surrounded in red on the right portion of the, of the rezoning area, and of course, the site on the left portion. To discuss the side on the left portion for a moment, this is a pre-existing, non-complying nursing home building. This is a building which is built upwards of a 1.3 FAR and at roughly eight stories in height, both non-complying under the existing zoning resolution pursuant to R4 district regulations. So this is a property which adds to the zoning rationale here. It's primarily populated by seniors. There's roughly 280 units in the building. So it was seen as a, as a benefit to the land use rationale for this rezoning to include in the site. Next slide. We would also note, as you look at the larger land use map here, that there are larger community facilities in the area. There's a five-story school to the east, you can see, of this block, which is, which is zoned on R4 as well, but allows for greater density, as well as six-story nursing homes to the south of the block. Next slide. And as Amanda scrolls, or as we scroll through the pictures, if you can just scroll through these pictures, we would allow Erica to discuss some of the Ayers properties of the site, as well as the educational aspects. Erica?
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Richard. Good morning, Commissioners. So the first thing that I want to point out, which is the next slide subsequent to the pictures, is that God's Battalion, who is a co-applicant of this petition, solicited responses from the immediate surrounding communities. So they spoke with their neighbor on Beach 67th Street, Beach 68th Street, as well as Beach 66th Street, who would be most impacted by this new development, and sought petitions of support for both the senior housing as well as the proposed charter school. And so this slide shows you exactly the respondents that, where they sought responses and the proximity of those responses, which were all positive to the proposed development. Next slide, please. So we are proposing a senior affordable rental apartments through New York City Department of Housing Preservation and Development Subsidy Program, where we will have 83 units, all, excuse me, 52 studios and 31-bedroom apartments. And the one, two-bedroom apartment will be the not income-producing super unit, where there will be a super available to the seniors for 24 hours of the day. We are also seeking state tax credits through the 9% competitive round for the fall of 2021, where we will meet the housing, New York State housing goal of seniors for the downstate area. This project will be 100% affordable housing, and then with seniors targeted throughout New York City. We are following the federal fair housing guidelines, and seniors 50, with 50% AMI and below will be eligible to apply for these apartments if they reside in New York City. There's a 30% set aside for formerly homeless. Those individuals will not go through the lottery system, but it will be a referral process in which we will work with our senior service provider, HANIC. Two, there will be an onsite social worker, case manager, as well as 4% of the building dedicated to senior services and recreational activities. And so at this time, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Brian DeBroski, think Architecture, to talk about the design of the building and how it is supporting both the SARAH program as well as the senior first and.
Thank you, Erica, and good morning, everyone. Next slide. So the building that we're discussing is the first phase of development. It is a, as we're discussing, a nine-story Ayers building. It is in a flood zone, so the ground level, there's no residential, it's just building entry and storage as required. Next slide. Here you can see that on the left, we have the seven existing zoning lots that will be merged. All the way in the left, in the yellow, is where the existing church is. In the orange is where the residential Ayers building will go. And in the right is where the school would go after the completion of the Ayers building. Next slide. So we'll be discussing the Ayers building. The, the basic design of the building is, at the ground level, is open-air parking that goes underneath the building, residential lobby, which is categorized as building entry, and then storage spaces within the flood zone. We're doing wet floodproofing, and everything is as per code. Also, the parking spaces were required to provide nine, but on the entire zoning lot, we will be providing those nine for the residential building, which is all as of right. Next slide. Once you get above the floodplain, that's where the residential units start, as well as the program for the units. So on the right in green, you'll see program offices. This is to assist the seniors and provide any services that they potentially need, which will be, as Erica mentioned, will be done by HANIC. And then on the left in orange is a community room. And in gray on the bottom left is where the utility spaces will be, since they need to be above the floodplain. There's the supers unit also at this level. Next slide. Here's a typical residential level, where you can see we're mixing the one-bedrooms and studios as per HPD guidelines. Everything is, will be complying to their standards. Next slide. At the setback level, we have, we located our laundry room, which is in the middle of the building, which is a positive active design feature for the seniors, and also great for seniors to have a social component, so that they can interact with other people in the building. And to the right of that is a community room. So when they're waiting for their laundry to be done, it's another place of interaction, as well as access to an outdoor terrace. Next slide. And then this is the typical setback level, again, ones in studios. Next slide. To, to the right of that, and this is a little bit more preliminary, because the charter school would be going, will be built after the residential building. The, the goal is to build the residential building first, and then the charter school. So this is more just a programming exercise for us at this point. Next slide. So at the ground level, you'll see building entry and some utilities in the cellar. Stores, I'm sorry, storage in the cellar, we can, all the utilities will be located above the floodplain. And then that parking will be continued off of the curb cut from the residential building at the back of the, the building. And that's where the rest of the required parking spaces will be provided for both buildings. Next slide. Here you can see a sec.
The time is up. And so thank you for the presentation, and I'll now turn it over to Commissioners who may have questions. Yes, Commissioner Levin.
Yes, I wonder if you could tell us a bit about the, how the charter school will come to be? Who will be operating it? Who the clientele is? What the relationship is with the church? I understand that's down the road, but it'd be helpful to understand what the basic plan is.
I think I can answer that question. So the church has been in conversation with a few already existing charter schools on the peninsula, who are considering expansion and would want to be in a new building that they could help design for their program. And so there are a couple of those conversations happening. It looks like it may advance forward with one of the potential. And so it would be a proposed elementary school that would either be expanding in reference to the number of classes that they own, that they have under their current charter, or possibly an extension to a middle school.
Okay. So the idea is to have it operated by an existing, an operator that is already running schools in the area?
Yes. As the, as the peninsula continues to grow with the need for additional school.
Okay, thank you.
Wrong question.
When the charter school does get built, have you guys or the applicant team discussed with DOT about creating a loading area to drop off for the students?
Yes.
Conversations would take place, have taken place with them.
Yes, there has been extensive conversation. I'll let, our environmental consultant, specifically our traffic consultant, I believe, is on the line. He could give you some details technically about those conversations with DOT School, Schools Department. Michael, is he able to speak? So he may not have access, so I will give you a less technical response. But we have been in communication with DOT specifically, with their school division. And so there's conversation about the meridian in, in, on Beach 67th being cut to facilitate drop-off and pickup when the school buses arrive in front of the building. There's been talk about a curb cut and the ability to turn around, not just for the safety, fire life and safety for, but also for the students as well. There's been talk about a setback in reference to, or no parking signs in proximity to not only the church, but extending that also to the school building to facilitate, again, accessibility and, and smooth facilitation of students entering and exiting the building in a safe way. So those have been, there's been extensive study around this and several suggestions of mitigation that we will need to put in place once that building is built.
Also, now, Michael Montalioni is one of the registered speakers as part of the applicant team, so if he would like to weigh in, please feel free. And Ryan, if you could confirm that he is able to join, that he's in great access.
Yeah, all the, all the people are panelists, so they should be able to, but.
Okay, we'll turn then to Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi, thank you. You know, I, I wonder if you could pull up the presentation, if it's appropriate. Could you speak to just the, the condition of the ground floor and perhaps the design elements that have been incorporated there that will really help maintain, you know, a sort of pedestrian-friendly environment? It's challenging, right, when you can't, when, when the ground floor needs to be, needs to be reflective of the floodproofing? So I would like to get some thoughts, like how you approach that and how the design is sensitive to that issue.
In regards to the school or the residential building?
Both. I mean, the, the project itself.
So can you go, can we go to the slide for the ground level of the residential building real quick? Because the residential building, we actually set the building back, and we're providing a landscaped area on the left portion of the entry that you see projected in the main rendering, or you saw on the previous slide on the main entry. And then in that, in that area where that projected yellow kind of frame is, we're setting back the glass another six feet to allow an area for the seniors to have, where, you know, loose chairs and stuff like that, so that they can kind of sit and wait for, if they're being picked up. Go to the next slide, please. So you can see here, as I was saying, the yellow zone, to the left of that, we're landscaping the solid wall where the storage would be, and there would be flood vents in those walls at lower areas. And then to the right of that, on the yellow, you can see the storefront is actually pushed back and is transparent all the way to the back of the garden, because there's storefront at the two ends of those kind of projecting walls. And then we're going to have loose seating, so that, you know, a lot of times the seniors, there's programs where they'll be picked up to go grocery shopping and, and do various things like that, accessory. And they'll have the ability to kind of sit out, kind of like a porch, and, and wait for those people. And then also, to the right of that, where the parking entry is, we have wood louvers in front of a landscaped area in order to kind of break down the scale to the, to, on the sidewalk. And then in front of that, we'll be providing street trees, as shown.
So just for clarification, there's no transparency, you know, as designed, the, the idea is that the landscaping softens the, the experience of the pedestrian, there are no windows, there, you know.
In the yellow area, that's all storefront. So that's all glazing. So.
I'm talking about where we didn't have the landscaping. Those are walls. You mentioned the louvers, but the other one is a full solid wall, correct?
It's a full solid wall because it's a, it's a store, it's, you know, one's the trash room and the other's bike storage. So, you know, the landscaping would really kind of, you know, be planted pretty well, so that it would soften it. And also, the wall is set back six feet from the property line.
Um, you know, I know we're not here to comment on design, but, you know, I'm interested, I am interested in the treatment of that wall, because I do think material really helps, you know, and can help address some of the starkness of a really, of a concrete wall, you know, is it concrete? Or are you thinking about the material? And is there any, any thought to how that material might address some of these issues that I'm raised?
So the material is, the cladding of the facade is fiber cement panels that have a staggered jointing in an artful way. And they're light fiber cement, so they're kind of in the lighter gray, kind of almost white category. And then the, those projecting walls are actually yellow. So there is, there is, you know, we are using lighter materials, and we are using color to kind of signify the entry and make it easier on the seniors to identify.
You have an image that, that shows that?
Sure. And then if you go two slides back, there's a rendering. So you can see the whitish fiber cement panels that have the jointing on it. They, they kind of turn down and touch the ground on the left of that yellow entry. And then that's where it will be landscaped. The landscaping that's shown currently in this rendering is, is, was provided by the renderer. So we, we haven't, you know, signed up a landscape designer yet to do that. It'll most likely be a design build during construction. So it will be our goal to have taller landscaping in order to kind of break down the harshness of a solid wall.
Thank you.
Um, in regards to the school, if you go to the second to last slide, is the lobby for the school. If you go to the school, we, you know, the rendering is, is not really up to date with the, with the lobby, and, and it's still very diagrammatic. So, you know, the lobby will be very transparent. The goal is for it to be very transparent. To the left of the lobby is, is open air currently, that is looking onto the parking. And the lobby is set back probably about three feet. And then there'll be street trees, and when that is fully designed, since it's kind of a phase two right now, we'll take into consideration having it be very friendly to the environment and welcoming and, and nice on the sidewalk.
Commissioner Marin.
Thank you. Hello to Erica. Brian, I have a question for you. If you can go back to that slide where you had, I have two questions. So one of them is, is if you can go back to the slide where you had the floor plan, where Commissioner Ortiz was talking about transparencies, that would help me out for a second. The reason why I asked for that is because you mentioned that there were nine parking spaces and I see six. So where would the other three be located?
So the, so it's actually one, we're merging seven lots into one single zoning lot. If you could go to the slide before this, yeah, I think it will show. So it was actually where you see the yellow, the orange, and the yellow. It's actually one, one single zoning lot. So in order to mitigate the amount of curb cuts on the site, when we were going through, we were going through the beginning phase of the U-Lerp, we reduced it to one curb cut. So if you go back to that plan, the one curb cut that happens at the residential, it turns right at the top.
Got it.
And then there's more parking spaces. If you go to the school plan on, there's more parking spaces on that back area. So, you know, the, the parking for the, the school building and the, and the Ayers building is, needs to provide a total of 15. There's being six provided at the portion of the, the Ayers building and the nine here.
Likely the nine here now. Good. My second question was going to be relative to the school. I mean, we've seen applications that have come to us with a school in plan in mind, and then the school construction authority. And then the school construction authority or the Department of Education changes their mind. And a school does not get built. If in fact that were to happen here, what would you surmise could get built on this parcel? And I guess that question would be for Erica.
Yes. So hello, are you?
Hi Erica.
So I think the the answer to that question is is twofold. One is that because this is property that is owned by the church. And it has to go through an AG approval. And and a court approval process, so an AG recommendation petition submitted and then. Supreme Court approval, we are pretty much into what we are proposing here without having to go back and and get. So I think some. Assurance or 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 there's more pressure on our part to deliver what we are actually proposing. Because it has to be approved by the court in order for us to move forward. And because this is a charter school, there's a bit more flexibility in reference to the financing thereof. And so the school construction authority is an option that will be pursued by the church. But there are other. Organizations and financing capital partners that have already begun those early communications such as Goldman Sachs. And like Lyft and List who are also interested in this proposal. Because there was a study done and there is going to be an additional, I believe, seventeen hundred seats that are needed on Far Rockaway. Based on the current trajectory of the developments on the peninsula.
And I think I, and this next question may not be for you, Erica, it may be for our staff, because I think I asked this question on Monday and I may have forgotten. But was there any FAR left on the nursing home site that's across the street? And I'm sure that's not for you, Erica, but if we can get an answer to that, that would be great.
Will do. Thank you. Commissioner Bernie.
Thank you. I just had a question about sea level rise and flooding. And I apologize, I my internet dropped me halfway through your presentation. So if you showed the the FEMA maps, I may have missed them. But I'm just wondering, I mean, you know, I don't know if this is one of those areas where recent zoning changes have precluded the building of nursing homes. Because they're such a vulnerable population in the event of flooding and evacuation. And I know that this isn't a nursing home, it's senior housing, but still it strikes me as a pretty vulnerable population to put into an area that's likely to. See significant seal level rise and flooding in the future. And I'm just wondering what the applicant feels about that issue.
So Brian, I would let you sort of answer that question from a more technical perspective as to how the building has been designed to mitigate. Those future concerns.
Yeah, so. We are in a flood zone. The B F E is nine plus one, so it's ten feet off of the ground level. Our habitable space, you know, meaning the units and and any program spaces are. At the second level and that starts at twelve foot eight, so we're two foot eight higher than the required height that we need to be above the. The the base plane. And then the ground level in all those areas, you know, the elevator cabs are going to be set to stay above the floodplain when they're not in use. And then also all of the level and lobby. Is approved. Making that if the water would be able to move through the spaces and. The seniors would be above that area because they are potentially higher than the height.
Yeah.
And it's all, and that's all according to to code. I think it might, I think your question might be a little bit more in terms of programming of like, why put seniors in an area that has the chance of flood?
It's really operational, then you've got them nice and dry above the flood, but now they're trapped there, right? And accessorized is not coming because the roads are not not usable. So that's my concern that you trap a hundred seniors in a building and they can't really get in and out. That's the issue.
Yeah, I I understand your question. I don't really, from an architectural standpoint, I don't, I don't really know how I would answer that question. I guess if there was an emergency, maybe people would come by in boats and things like that and evacuate the building, but I I can't answer that question.
Are others on the applicant team prepared to address it?
I think I would just probably. Dovetail off of what Brian just said. So if it was, you know, a situation where. The flooding happened much more so than what we are half prepared for. Then I think, you know, there would be other mitigations that would, you know, be put into place to to help rescue everyone. Again, there's, there's a number of developments that are happening on the peninsula. So I think that there would be systems in place to deal with an emergency such as that as as it has been in the past. So. Again, I think that, you know, we we've, we've designed to address what we do. Understand will be the future in reference to. The the water levels, but anything beyond that, I think there would be. Systems and emergency responses put in place that would not only address this building, but all the other developments on the peninsula.
In. For continuing to keep the focus on the issue of sea level rise and how it affects our low lying communities, including Rockaway's.
And I think one thing to to piggyback on Erica's previous statement is. The windows that are on the second level are designed in a way where they can open up in case of emergency use. So from an architectural standpoint, if there was a flood and there was an emergency. Response, which I'm sure there is in this area because it's in a flood zone, then if people needed to evacuate the building. They would be able to exit out of, you know, the windows onto some sort of response vehicle.
Access a boat is coming your way. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes, um, thank you. I'm, you know, I'm glad Commissioner Bernie highlighted this really important issue and it's, it's. You know, I think we've gotten to a good place in this conversation with the recognition that there does need to be some. Planning for this, it's not enough to say, oh, well, it's legal to put these uses here, so we'll just go ahead. It's not a nursing home. It's, it's senior housing, but it is still a vulnerable population and. And I think this color finally got around to acknowledging what really has to happen here, which is to plan for. An evacuation in the case that it's needed. It's not enough to say, well, someone's going to come get us. But that wasn't my question. I just wanted to invite the applicant team into the conversation that we had on Monday. About what was really the only comment that the community board had on this, which is that the nursing home across the street should not be included in the rezoning. Can you shed some light on, and the department staff had some thoughts for us about how the appropriateness of. Medium density zoning on the nursing home site, acknowledging that it is currently overbuilt for current zoning and this will make it conforming. So that's a good thing. But I wonder if the applicant team wants to add any thoughts to the discussion that we had on Monday? Or to the discussion that took place at the community board? And also can you confirm there's no relationship between the applicant team and the owner of the nursing home property or is there?
Oh, I'll start. If you want to comment, you may, but first of all, I'll just confirm there's no relationship between the applicant team and the nursing home. And and really, you know, we we've had a tremendous experience at. At CB fourteen as well as at the Queensborough President's Office with regards to the rezoning, the potential it affords to this area. And the operations of the church is a longstanding and good neighbor to people in the area. So from a land use perspective, the inclusion of their nursing home made sense to us. For some of the reasons discussed at the hearing and also, you know, it just so happens that Beach sixty seventh here is a wide street. Oddly enough, at eighty five feet wider than the surrounding streets that go north of Beach Channel, which itself is a wide street. So it made a step up in density for this rezoning area very appropriate, as well as the nursing home. Which is indeed closer to Beach Channel Drive than the thirty one thousand square foot zoning lot upon which the development is placed. With regards to Commissioner Marine and the and the earlier questions, we discussed briefly the existing FAR of the nursing home at a one point three seven. Exceeding the the existing permitted FAR of point seven five for an R four A community facility building. So given the nature of the longstanding units there, the longstanding nature of the nursing home and the occupation of majority of those units. It was seen as as appropriate to, for this building to be included and to become a complying building. To the extent that that there was additional FAR at the site, it would be again tied to zoning restrictions as well as affordability. I believe that, you know, they would have a potential for a three point six FAR under our six zoning. And and there would be a requirement of, let's say, point two five percentage of of inclusionary units. So you could, you could have a two hundred plus residential development of which fifty plus units would be affordable. Having said that, you know, the community board, it was a very thoughtful discussion. You know, they they basically were of the opinion that they were concerned about that potential development, the Queensborough President, not not, not as concerned. So the inclusion, I think, makes sense from a land use perspective. And having been before this community board many times, they're very sensitive to it's issues around density and such. But on a larger scale, we really feel that it's supported, given everything we've discussed and the prevalence of our six zoning on. On again, over eighty blocks to the south of the site.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. And I would, I would note, I did go take a look at the environmental. The E A S on this after the discussion on Monday and note that the reasonable worst case development scenario shows a, you know, a box for the. An axonometric for what could get built there that is not dramatically different in scale from what the nursing home is. And that twenty one units with a portion of affordable housing there wouldn't be the end of the world, at least as it seems to me.
Yeah, no, that's always, well, given the eight story building. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Brian, I don't see that others have signed up to speak. Could you check whether anyone has? Signed up during dependency of the meeting?
There are no further speakers on the side.
The applicant team for your presentation and answering our questions and close this public hearing. And I'll ask if there is any other business before the commission.
No, Madam Chair, there is no other business before the commission, but I do have some public information. For those of you who were unable to or did not wish to testify, you can submit written testimony online by selecting this here. On the upcoming meeting page of this NYC. Engage portal through D C P's webpage or by mailing your comments to City Planning Commission Calendar Information Office. One twenty Broadway, thirty fourth floor, New York, New York, one zero two seven one. Thank you.
And with that, I will say goodbye to the commissioners and end this meeting. Enjoy the rest of the day. Bye.
Thank you.
Bye bye.